You made it in time, huh? All right, we'll call the meeting to order on behalf of the Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome our residents and viewers to this regular meeting of February 8th, 2022. And before we get into the agenda, I'd like to introduce our new Commissioner, Commissioner Rebecca McCabee.
Hello.
Hello there. On tonight's agenda, we have organizational meeting, and we got a couple of public hearings, and then we got a couple of discussion items. We will be following our agenda tonight as printed. And I mentioned, we have our organizational meeting. We do that every February. At this meeting, we elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and then we have various appointments to committees that we'll go through shortly after that. So with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Planning Manager Whipler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Yes, this is the time of year where the Commission has to elect a Chair and Vice Chair from the group to serve for the 2022 year. So with that, I will look for a nomination for Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Roddy for Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Chair Roddy it is. We will take a nomination for Vice Chair.
If interested, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Teske.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so it will be.
Tony, do you want to call the roll on that, or do you want to wait till after the appointment to committees?
We can do the roll, I guess now. Winshaido?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
Lado?
Yes.
McCabee?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Tony. As I mentioned, part of our organizational meeting is appointment to committees. There are various committees, three of which are ones that work with and communicate with our neighbors, our close neighbors, the townships. The first one's the Empire Advisory Committee. Commissioner Winshuttle, would you be a representative on that?
Yes.
And then also Castle Rock Discussion Group. Commissioner Lado, would you represent us on that?
Yes.
And then also with Eureka Township. Commissioner Teske, would you represent us on that?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the three working committees with the townships. Then we have another committee. It's MUSA Review Committee, and MUSA's an acronym for Metropolitan Urban Service Area, and really, it's the extension of sanitary sewer, which is essential for growth of our community. Commissioner McCabee, would you be a representative of that along with myself?
Yes.
Okay, so those would be the committees. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Or a second?
A second.
Motion and second for the appointments to the committees. Call the roll, please.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
Lado?
Yes.
McCabee?
Yes.
Winshaido?
Yes.
Okay, then in front of the committee then is another housekeeping item. That would be the minutes from our previous meeting from January 11th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, call the roll, please.
Roddy?
Yes.
Lado?
Yes.
McCabee?
Yes.
Winshaido?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That was our housekeeping items. We now will get into our two public hearings. We will open them both at the same time. The second one is a continuation from our January meeting. But the first one's a variance request from the interior side yard setback within the Fair Hill Estate at North Creek. This subdivision is located along Highway 3 and 190th Street, and the lot in question is 19187 Crystal Terrace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Yes, before you tonight is a variance request from MI Homes for basically 3.48 inches into the interior side yard setback for new construction at the property address at 19187 Crystal Terrace. The property is legally described as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Fair Hill Estate at North Creek, 2nd Edition. The parcel is part of what was deemed the Focus Group 2C, which in your packet, there's a map that kind of shows the different focus areas within the planned unit development that was approved for the Fair Hill addition. This was, these areas were to be platted with 50-foot-wide widths. That width is measured at the front yard setback. When a lot, a lot can be less than that 50 feet as it goes towards the rear, as long as that minimum setback is basically addressed at that front yard setback. In this case, the lot was planted with just over a 50-foot-wide front property line. But as I had mentioned, it does narrow towards the back to 49.5 feet. The house that was sold for this particular lot meets the side yard requirements on the northern property line as well as on the southeast corner. I will show you the survey here. We'll go to document camera. Zoom in here. All right. This is the survey that was done for the proposed house. The setback, again, with the PUD is minimum of 5 feet. That's what was allowed per that planned unit development. With this, the house meets the 5-foot at 3 out of the 4 corners. So it meets it here, here, and here. This is where it goes down to the 4.7, 4.71 setback. Basically, it is, again, 3, just over 3 inches is what they're requesting for a variance at this particular corner. As the Commission is aware, there are nine criteria that the Planning Commission must review as part of any variance application. Go through those. The first one is because of particular physical surroundings, shape, configuration, topography, or other conditions of the specified parcel of land involved. Strict adherence to the regulations of this title would cause practical difficulties. Economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. As mentioned, the parcel narrows slightly in the rear and is adjacent to an outlot that the city does own and is not adjacent to any other residential lot. The other thing to keep in mind here is, as you'll notice on the survey, there is no side yard or interior drainage utility easement that was planted with that. That was done because of the being neighboring to that pond. So the setback does not go into any kind of drainage utility easement either, so. The second criteria is that the variance would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The property is guided for a single-family home. Within the comprehensive plan is the proposed use, in this case, is for a single-family home. Number 3, that the variance would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the title. The purpose of the minimum side yard setback is to provide adequate space between houses, and that the lot adjacent to the proposed side yard setback variance is an outlot, again, owned by the city, which is intended to be kept as open space. 4, the conditions upon which the variance is based are unique to the parcel of land for which the variance is sought and not applicable generally to other properties within the same zoning classification. The parcel is unique and is adjacent to a city-owned outlot and not another single-family lot or street. With that being said, the lot is an undeveloped parcel where all required setbacks could easily be met by modifying the building plans for the proposed house to be constructed on the parcel. Number 5, alleged difficulty or hardship caused by this title has not been created by any persons presently having an interest in the parcel of land. The decrease in lot width in the rear of the property was to provide adequate spacing between the trail and the utilities. That includes stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water that run between the subject parcel and the infiltration basin that is located to the south. Again, as indicated in number 4 above, this is an undeveloped parcel, and building plans could be adjusted, modified to meet the setbacks. 6, the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to other property within the vicinity in which the parcel of land is located or substantially diminish property values. We do not feel that the variance would have those effects. 7, the proposed variance will not substantially increase congestion of the public streets or increase the danger of fire or be detrimental to the public welfare or public safety. Again, we do not believe it would have any of those adverse impacts. 8, the variance request is the minimum action required to eliminate the practical difficulties. For the applicant, this would be the minimum action to eliminate that practical difficulty. And then lastly, number 9, variances may not be approved for any use not allowed under this title for property in the zone where the affected person's land is located, except that the temporary use of one-family dwelling as a two-family dwelling may be authorized by variance. Proposed use is a single-family home, which is permitted within the zoning district that it is located. The action that is requested this evening, the Planning Commission does have two options to consider this application. One would be to approve the variance request allowing the 0.29-foot or 3.48-inch variance to the interior side yard setback within the R2 PUD district for the construction of a new single-family home contingent upon the following, and that being obtaining all necessary building permits. Or 2, to deny the variance application based on the request not being able to meet all of the criteria needed above, or needed to approve a variance, specifically criteria number 4 and 5, and direct staff to draft findings of fact for said denial.
All right, thank you, Tony. Is there any representative of the applicant in the room? Would you like to speak? Could you state your name too, please?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, Emily Becker with MI Homes 5354, Parkdale Drive, St. Louis Park, 55416. Thanks for your consideration of those requests tonight. As stated by Tony, it is adjacent to a city-owned outlot, so it is unique in that factor. And then also, it's a very minimal request. I do understand that the lot was planted by us, and it was admittedly a little bit of an oversight, and I totally get that. But I do feel like the intent of the ordinance is still being met. Obviously, that setback is meant to provide spaces in between the single-family homes, and in this case, it won't be an issue because obviously, there's not going to be a home that's going to be next to that lot. And it, as Tony had mentioned and in with the report, it was kind of minimized in that back just because of the basin and the trail, so.
Thank you. Could you stay available if there's questions from either those?
Of course.
Residents of the Commission, please?
Yep.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any comments or questions regarding this variance request? Seeing none from the audience, we'll start with Commissioner Teske.
Yeah, so I don't really have any questions. I get that, you know, it's an oversight and we're talking minimum inches here. So I understand, and I agree, that, you know, there's no adjacent home or structure. So, and then also, you know, there's no utilities there as well. So I'm kind of okay with it, a little bit. So, but I think, I'm hoping this is not an oversight that we'll see in other areas within this development.
We hope it's a one-time deal.
Okay.
Ms. Becker, did you want to comment on that?
It will be one-time. I will make sure to do that.
Okay.
Not comment.
Because I think, I think what you're going to hear from the rest of the Commission is going to be very similar to what Commissioner Teske had said too, okay? Commissioner Winshuttle?
Yeah, I concur, I guess. How to put it politely or nice, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out because we're going to change or modify this by 3 inches or 3 and 1/2 inches approximately. So the city's, yes, it's 3 inches. The city's going to give up 3 inches on the park or the adjacent lot to benefit MI Homes as a business, to put this house there. So I guess my question is, is there anything in return that the city is going to benefit by doing this?
Nothing that I can think of, no, other than allowing another home that's been promised to be built.
Sure. And I guess the question is, why can't you adjust the size of the house, or what?
Yeah, so from what I understand is, you know, our floor plans are as-is. It's a little bit difficult to adjust it that way. I guess another option we could be, we could have done is to come back and adjust the lot lines, which would have been a little bit more of a complicated process, buying back. But yeah, from what I understand, it is difficult to adjust the home, and it has been sold to that customer. Obviously, we're customer-focused, and to go back and ask them, I guess just because we're so customer-focused, we'd rather ask the city. I guess if there is something that you guys would propose, we could certainly take that into consideration, that you could think of that would make up for that 3 and 1/2 inches.
And so the customer knows, or didn't know, going into the, buying the lot, that this variance was going to have to be requested?
No, it was an oversight within our system, just because of how, as Tony had mentioned, when it was input into our system, it was input because the lot width at the front yard setback was 50 feet. It wasn't taken into consideration that it narrowed in the back, again, because of that basin and the trail. So admittedly, it was just a human mistake.
Anything else, Phil?
No.
Commissioner Lado?
I guess that would have been my question as well, is what would be the practical consideration to make the change? And I'm guessing, Tony, you can correct me, so if they decided to deny this, then there wouldn't be a home built there at all, or they would have to go back to the drawing board and redesign? I'm just curious.
They would have to put a house on there that would meet that 5-foot setback.
Would meet that standard. But we've already sold the house to this particular customer, so then you're...
Well, MI has, the city has not.
Correct, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, clarify, yes. So no, I just, I wasn't, I misspoke, I apologize. So, yeah, I mean, and I guess for me personally, 3 inches, yeah, that's a human error, and I mean...
To be honest, you're probably not even going to notice being with where it's located.
Exactly, and it looks like, could you go over the next, is it the next map that's in color? I just want to make sure I have the correct location in mind. Because I think it's, is it by the 2 ponds on the left-hand side? Yep, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to clarify that that was the correct location.
That's it.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner McCabee?
Yeah, I don't really have anything else that the other Commissioners haven't brought up. I know that the 3 inches isn't a huge deal, but given that it was a human error and where the house and the lot is located, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be a huge impact of what they're proposing.
Ms. Becker? You did a nice job representing MI. They put you in a tough spot. And I'll give you a little background. I live out there. I moved in about 3, 4 months ago, and so I'm familiar with your process. And it's a good process. And part of that is looking ahead of time at the setbacks. Because I remember in our situation, there was something we couldn't do because of a setback. And so they caught that ahead of time, which was good. This one, they didn't. And I think the other Commissioners addressed all the other issues. There is really nothing the city can get from this, so, you know, I will support it. But I will tell a little story, because the Commissioner will remember this, is that we had another variance request, and it was out at the high school with that shit. And the other side of the, the one that was getting, was the resident that was getting short-changed, if you call it that, from that, was the city again. And it was some wetlands. So that was, that one was given to... If this variance request was on the north side, and it was affecting a future homeowner to the north, that would be a different story to me. Because then you're infringing on somebody else's property. Yeah, so I don't, and I think you'd do it. And I know you have a lot of inventory, different types of houses that could be put there that could meet this. And I think that's why some of the Commissioners struggled with, you know, they could change. And I know you've got this in contract and it's staked. So, and I'm glad you caught it, you know, you're coming in, you know, asking for permission and not for forgiveness, which is a good thing. So I will support it, because it isn't significant, as the other Commissioners mentioned. But don't let it happen again, okay? Okay?
Okay.
Did you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Anything else from the Commission? If not, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion?
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. Call the roll, please.
Lado?
Yes.
McCabee?
Yes.
Winshuttle?
Yes, one time only.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes, same. In front of the Commission then is a variance request for 3.48 inches for the interior side yard setback in the R2 zoning district for the lot we've been discussing. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
McCabee?
Yes.
Winshaido?
Yes.
Teske?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
Lado?
Yes.
All right. With that then, we'll move into our second public hearing. This is the Vermillion Valley Development preliminary and final plat, and this is a continued public hearing. The applicant, I guess, is a StanTech, or is it Edelman, Tony?
The Edelman Family Farm is the owner of the property. StanTech was listed as the applicant on the application.
All right, thank you.
Yes, this is for the preliminary and final plat for the Vermillion Valley Development. This property, as shown on the overhead here, is located just west of the River's Edge Development that this Planning Commission reviewed later last year. It's on the north end of 220th Street and just south of the Vermillion River Crossings Development where McDonald's is located and the CDA has their apartment complex as well. So what this plat is looking at is basically dividing the property up into 5 different outlots. The property in total is just over 80 acres. It has a mix of zoning districts. It includes the mixed-use commercial residential, parks and open space, and R3, which is our medium-density residential district. As I had mentioned, the plat does consist of 5 outlots. This is the preliminary plat here, which is certain more. For orientation purposes, this area up here is the Vermillion River Crossings area. This here is the River's Edge, and then you have 220th Street adjacent to the south there.
Tony, could I just remind the Commission, the River's Edge are those townhouses that are across from Bachman Middle School?
Correct, right by the fire station there. The outlots, again, it's 5 outlots. Outlet A is just over 10 acres. It's a future development site. So that's this area located here, adjacent to the Vermillion River Crossings Development. Outlet B is just over 5 acres. The county is looking to acquire this as part of their natural area and greenway corridor. And then Outlet C, which is the large 33, almost 34 acres, located here. Again, the county is looking to purchase that as part of their land conservation program. So both that and Outlet B, C, and then D located here, again, the county's looking to purchase that, again, as part of that whole entire process for greenway and land conservation purposes. And then the last outlot is Outlet E, which is just over, or just under 26 acres. That's this southeast portion here. That, again, would be future development at some point in time, so. But basically, the plat is necessary in order to effectuate those land sales to the county. So that's what they are trying to do by plating these as outlots. The plat is adjacent to Future County Road, 220th Street, and therefore is subject to the Dakota County contiguous plat ordinance. The plat commission did meet on January 5th and considered the preliminary and final plats. Right-of-way needs for the Future County Road are met with the dedication of the 75.01 feet of half right-of-way. Additionally, the county did request that 10-foot-wide perimeter drainage and utility easements be removed from Outlets B and C, and that a 15-foot-wide trail drainage and utility easement be provided along the southern line of Outlet A. The removal of those easements within Outlets B and C is due to the funding sources that the county will be utilizing to purchase those parcels. The additional 15-foot-wide trail and drainage utility easements within Outlet A is due to wetlands that may affect the construction of the future greenway trail through Outlet B. The attached preliminary and final plats have been revised to reflect those comments from the county, so. The action that is requested this evening is to recommend approval of the Vermillion Valley Development preliminary and final plats, and forward that recommendation to the City Council.
All right, thank you, Tony. I know we have some residents that are here. Is there anybody here representing the applicant? Seeing none, we'll do the best to answer questions as we can. I know a couple of you raised questions and wanted to know if there was going to be an explanation. Was this sufficient explanation for you? Kind of maybe? All right.
Where is the house located around this? Can you point it out?
I believe the house is located here.
Can you put that up, Tony?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
It'd be located right here.
Okay, so that house is staying?
For the time being, yes. Until that property is sold and developed, which at this point, they're not, there's no plan submitted for that, so.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know what the rules were. So the purpose of the development that they're doing now is because the people who own it have been offered from the county to buy part of it?
To buy the natural area, correct.
Okay, and the reason that there are 3 outlots is because why? Why would they?
Different funding sources.
Okay.
That they're using. They have to deviate up being, being that they're using different funding sources. There's different requirements attached to that funding, so.
That answer all your questions?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I live on 220, so I just wanted to see what was going to change in my neighborhood down Main Street. So I was looking, I was just concerned about...
As of right now, nothing will really change.
Increase traffic or something like that, so that might be seen now, it makes sense to me, so.
Change of ownership in the land, that's pretty much it. So, all right. Seeing no more questions at this time, and if you have some more, we'll come back to you, okay? We'll start with Commissioner Winshuttle.
I have no questions, looks good.
Commissioner Teske?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I'm excited about additional park space potentially in the future, so.
Commissioner Lado?
My only question would be, in those future development sites, are there any flood zone concerns at all? We're going to be doing building in that area?
Flood zone, there shouldn't be any specific flood zone issues on those. I do want to note that they have identified this area of this development as future city park area. Which that is the closest portion to the river as-is. But when they come in for development, they'll have to delineate that and prove that. Either it's outside of the flood zone, or if it is, they'll have to go through the letter of map revision in order to build within that. So they'll have to determine that as part of any development.
Okay.
Process.
That's all I have, thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Oh, yeah.
Tony, how will that park impact or be incorporated with River's Edge?
River's Edge has their park area located adjacent to it.
It was going to be tied together, right? Okay.
That was the plan.
I remember that, okay.
Yep, so they would be contiguous, so we'd have a larger park area.
Okay. Anything else, Jan?
Nope, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner McCabee?
I have no further questions.
Okay, Tony, utilities in the area aren't even close, are they? Okay, Tony, utilities in the area aren't even close, are they?
They'll be brought to the site with River's Edge Development.
But that's considered...
Which will be up here.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yep.
Okay. You know, I really don't. I, I think for the residents that are out there, you will see very little, if any, change. You know, maybe some improvements to the property as it gets going, but other than that, I don't think it's going to be impacty at all, at least that we know. If it is on the south side of 220th that we talked about earlier, that's something maybe best addressed by the township. All right, anything else? If not, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, call the roll, please.
Winchuttle.
Yes.
Teske.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Leto.
Yes.
McAbby.
Yes.
All right, we have in front of us then is a recommendation to our City Council for the Vermillion Valley Development Preliminary and Final Platte. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, please.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation to her City Council. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Teske.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Leto.
Yes.
McAbby.
Yes.
Winchuttle.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Hopefully, you got your questions answered. And if not, you can certainly call Tony or the township if you, if they're more directed at them. And also, the county could maybe fill you in. All right, we'll move into our first discussion item. That'd be Sapphire Lake Fourth Edition Final Platte.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Before you tonight is the final edition of the Sapphire Lake subdivision. This final plat, which is the fourth edition, proposes 30 single-family lots. This is part of the 101 lots that were planted as part of the first, second, and third edition. In total, there's 131 lots within the subdivision for the project. The fourth edition, as shown here, does comply with the preliminary plat that was approved by both Plank Commission and City Council in August of 2018. The plat's comprised of the following area summary. Lot one area is 1.95 acres. Block two is .66 acres. Block three is 1.14 acres. Block four is 2.15. And the total lot area is just under six acres at 5.9. The total outlot area within the plat is 5.08 acres. And then the total right-of-way is just over two at 2.35 acres, with the total area being platted just over 13 acres. As mentioned, this fourth edition does contain 30 single-family lots. The average lot size is 8,589 square feet, with the smallest lot being 6,996 square feet in size, and the largest being 14,454 square feet. Property is zoned R2, which is our low-medium-density residential zoning district, and requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. All lots proposed in this fourth edition meet or exceed those minimum requirements. The final plat does show three outlots, those being A, B, and C. Outlot A, which is .175 acres, and Outlot B, which is .0085 acres, are remnant parcels and would likely be combined and developed as part of any future development of the adjacent property to the north. Outlot C, which is on the south end of the development, is 4.89 acres in size and consists of wetland and open space. And Outlot C will be deeded to the city with this development phase. The final plat shows the extension of both 213th Street West and Spruce Street from where they currently terminate within the third edition. Spruce Street will be extended to the right-of-way of the future Biscayne Avenue, which is located at the eastern border of the development. Spruce Street is a non-divided residential collector that consists of a 70-foot right-of-way and a 38-foot-wide roadway measured face-to-curb-to-face-to-curb. 213th Street West street section will be comprised of a 60-foot right-of-way and 32-foot-wide roadway. Five-foot-wide sidewalks will be provided on the north sides of both 213th Street West and Spruce Street, and an eight-foot-wide trail will be constructed through Outlot C. And they will be located near the rear lot lines of those lots, which I will try to show you here, where that trail will be located. I have it highlighted in yellow, and I apologize, it's probably hard to see. There we go. Very nice. So the trail goes along here, and then connects all the way up through the city park that's located here. That was dedicated as part of that first edition. So that will be constructed as part of this phase as well. The landscaping plan that was approved as part of the overall development plan, this will include lot furnished trees and will be, excuse me, will be provided in accordance with the city's landscaping requirements. The engineering department has reviewed the fourth edition final plat and recommends approval contingent upon satisfaction of all engineering comments related to the construction plans for grading and utilities, as well as the applicant entering into a development contract with the city and all security fees and costs paid. This includes a comment regarding the proposed pedestrian ramp that would be located at the corner of Spruce Street and 213th Street. Let's let me go back to this, which would be at this lot here. The pedestrian ramp is proposed, as proposed extends into or out of the right-of-way and impacts the, the lot itself. This will likely require a slight modification to that lot, basically rounding the corner off to ensure that that ramp is located entirely in the right-of-way versus encroaching upon that lot. Minor change, nothing that should affect any kind of approval this evening. The action that is requested this evening is to recommend approval of the Sapphire Lake Fourth Edition Final Platte contingent upon the following and forward that recommendation onto the City Council. Number one, the satisfaction of all engineering comments related to the construction plans for grading and utilities, including modifying Lot 1 Block 2 to ensure pedestrian ramp is located entirely within right-of-way prior to recording of that final plat. And two, a development contract between the applicant and the city of Farmington shall be executed and security fees and costs shall be paid. Submission of all other documents required under the development contract shall be required. Any questions?
Thank you, Tony. First of all, you've done a great job out there.
You want this back, don't you?
Yeah.
We can throw it on there if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, good evening. John Anderson, 14832 Estate Avenue, Southeast Prior Lake. I represent the developer and owner. And we are doing the last phase of Sapphire Lake. The first three phases have gone very well for us, so we're excited to get this project and wrap it up here this summer. The plan would be to start construction. It's already graded out there, so we got to start utility and street construction this spring, when weather allows us. The one comment I have at this point on that pedestrian ramp that Tony mentioned, our engineers already sent over a revised map this afternoon. We didn't even need to adjust the right-of-way. They were able to squeeze the pedestrian ramp into the exact right-of-way that was there. So we should be good to go. City engineer will review it, make sure it's good. If not, we do have the ability to adjust it slightly and, but very minor change. Other than that, we'll just look forward to moving this forward this summer and finishing it off, so.
Good deal. The residents seem to really enjoy your development, and it must be the quality of your builders and everything, so.
Yeah, they've done a good job. The, the lake in the middle, or whatever you want to call it, has been a big draw. People really like that. And if you've been out there this last fall, there'd be like a thousand geese out there sometimes. There's, you know, stuff going on all over the place, so, but yeah.
Good. Could you stay available for questions? We'll start with Commissioner Leto.
I don't have any questions, it looks good, thank you.
Commissioner Teske.
Yeah, same. I do not have any questions, it looks good, thank you.
Commissioner Winchuttle.
Yep, I'm impressed, looks good out there.
Commissioner McAbby.
I don't have any questions either, it looks nice out there.
You've done a good job. And I remember when this commission spoke with you back in 18, and, you know, you promised a quality development, and you produced. That's a good thing.
The big thing is we got the trail out, connect all the way back into Curry Waterway as well, so it'd be nice.
Yeah.
It's a nice connection.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, you know, I think the, one of the issues was that crossing of that waterway when we first talked back three, four years ago, and you did a nice job. I mean, it's not impacted, so, good deal. All right, then, in front of the commission then would be Sapphire Lake Fourth Edition Final Platte with two contingencies. And John, do you agree to those contingencies?
Yes.
You do, all right, thank you. Is there a motion? This would be a recommendation to our City Council.
I'll make the recommendation.
You have a favorable recommendation for Sapphire Lake Fourth Edition with two contingencies. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Roddy.
Yes.
Leto.
Yes.
McAbby.
Yes.
Winchuttle.
Yes.
Teske.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Yep, good luck this summer. All right, we have one final discussion item. That's the open meeting law that Tony is going to talk about.
Yes, I won't go into any great detail on it. Each year, I like to provide you information on the open meeting law. Being this is a public body, there are certain requirements that you have to meet as a condition, or as a commission, to ensure that the meeting is open and transparent to the general public. So the information I provided you is for your leisurely reading. Certainly, if you have questions, feel free to give me a call, and we can certainly chat about it. But again, it's more just for your information, so.
Good advice, Tony, thank you. Anything else from staff?
I have nothing, sir.
Anything else from the commission? If not, I'll remind the commission, along with our residents and viewers, that our next regular meeting will be March 8th. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're officially adjourned, thank you.